Commissioner's regular meeting for April 28th. And today, we're really blessed to have Pastor Ike Reichert lead us in the opening, in the invocation and then pledge of allegiance too. I'll have him do both. So those who will and need, please stand.
May we pray together? Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you give us in life. And Lord, on this particular day, we pray for our country. We pray for our world with the COVID crisis, that God, you would help to quell that. Thank you for all those amazing frontline professionals that are looking after us right now, that are sacrificing so much to be able to protect us and to be able to help get us healthy. So God, thank you that we live in a county that has responded and we pray that we will continue to because it's going to take all of us working together and you working through us to help be a part of the solution, not be a part of the problem. We lift this prayer up today and all of God's children said, amen. Do you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ike. And then I'd like to give the microphone over to Commissioner Burrow for a second. She has some real kind words here from people that have meant a lot to this county and I'd like she to take a moment to silence about them. So Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, thank you Chairman. I'd like to take a moment to remember some of the community leaders that have passed away since our last meeting. Scott Chadwick, who was a former District Three Commissioner and a longtime employee at the Tax Commissioner's Office, retired, passed away on March 27th. Babe Atkins Byrne, huge community leader and wife of former Cobb County Chairman Bill Byrne, passed away on April 3rd. And most recently, Joanne Ellers from the City Marietta, Keep Marietta Beautiful, longtime employee and director with the City of Marietta, Keep Marietta Beautiful, passed away Friday the 24th of April. So if you would, remember their families in your prayers and offer your condolences to them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. I'm going to go right into, for those that are at home and watching the agenda, we had a presentation originally scheduled, but we decided to delay that until we bring this issue back about funding of some agencies here in Cobb County to address certain social needs issues. So we'll go right into public comment. And so with that, Mr. Rowling?
Chairman, we have seven people that have signed up for comment. Usually we have six at the beginning. If the board wishes, we'd hear all of them now.
I think that's fine with the board, sure.
And the first person is John Hull?
Yes, thank you. May I go ahead?
Yes, sir. You have five minutes. I'll have a timer on here and I'll let you know when your time stops, okay? Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is John Hull. I'm the lead pastor of Eastside Church on Lower Roswell Road. We, about five years ago, assumed what many of you will remember as the Olive Springs Baptist Church on the corner of Austell and Sandtown Roads. Three years ago, Eastside on Lower Roswell rebranded that campus of the old Olive Springs Church to Eastside Mosaic. It was an intentional move by our church to reach out to that neighborhood. The theme there is that we want to be a catalyst for life in that neighborhood of South Marietta, South Cobb, Fair Oaks, et cetera. Prior to the COVID crisis, we were in the process just a few months ago and had been for about two years distributing approximately 100 boxes of food per month and distributing dozens of sack lunches per week. It was going well and we were on a learning curve. And since the COVID crisis, we've really had to ramp up. The demand has grown exponentially in that community. We are now in real time distributing about 500 boxes of groceries per week and we provide hundreds of sack lunches now, four times per week in cooperation with schools in the area with whom we've built relationship. We work with Cobb and Marietta City Schools, schools such as Fair Oaks, Dunleith, and Belmont. We've gotten into the appropriate habit here of collecting, sorting, packing, and delivering food. Our primary food source has been the Atlanta Food Bank. We also have individual donors and individual churches that will provide us with grocery items. And we've developed prior to COVID, we've developed a very good relationship with local grocery stores. Since the COVID crisis, we've seen an acceleration of partners, even in East Cobb concerned about the South Cobb area and believing what Mosaic's mission is. We've seen a real intensification of partnership from our friends at Johnson Ferry Baptist Church, Mount Bethel United Methodist Church, and some others in the East Cobb area. In the month of March alone, our Eastside Mosaic campus logged in about 250 volunteer hours. We presently have over 100 volunteers who are working our site there at Austell Road and Sandtown Roads. We have become, through circumstances, the biggest distribution site for storehouse ministries of the Noonday Association. Part of our purpose when we rebrand, rebranded was to become really the South Cobb Distribution Center for Storehouse, and that has happened. You know the county better than all of us. You know our location provides us then an opportunity to get food and care to folks that live down the Austell Road corridor, all the way down to the Austell-Mabelton area. And it also, we're only a block away from South Cobb Drive, so we have access quickly to distribution in the South Cobb Drive corridor, all the way down to 285. We are a member of the Noonday Association of Churches in Cobb County. The association itself has about 130 churches in Cobb, 20 or more, and we have some mission churches. So I would say 20 plus or more churches in the Noonday Association are in the South Cobb area. And most of those churches are deep in the neighborhoods of South Cobb residents. We are also a part of the inaugural group called South Cobb United, which started about six months ago, a partnership of Noonday Association churches, other local churches in South Cobb, local business owners, as well as a great group of nonprofit organizations with a similar purpose. Over the weeks, we have managed to, months, we've developed buying power for groceries prior to COVID. We've developed an excellent network. As I conclude this, let me tell you that some of the things that we are noticing and would like to get better at is how can we serve warm meals? How can we deliver warm meals? We're also concerned about buying and prepping for senior adults with dietary needs in this crisis. I am a diabetic and 62 years old and have a real concern about diabetics and others that have special dietary needs, people who can't get to a grocery store for whatever reason, but still need obviously to eat. In conclusion, let me tell you that we are truly in this community of Austell Road, South Cobb Drive, all of that vicinity. We are there for the long haul. Eastside Church on the Mother Church.
Mr. Hull, sorry. Mr. Hull, your time's up.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Lynn Harrison?
Hi, my name is Lynn Harrison and I serve as an associate pastor at Orangeville Baptist Church in Austell. And I lead a collaboration of pastors and other sector leaders in the city of Austell known as the Austell City Collaborative. We are part of South Cobb United and my church is a member of the Noonday Association. I want to begin with a simple question. What will funds delivered to target hunger really accomplish? Will it rescue kids and their families from hunger and food security? Excuse me, food insecurity, yes. But there's more that the allocation of funds to provide food to families can accomplish. I believe this is a great opportunity to focus not only what our actions in the near future will rescue the next generation from, but also on what our actions today rescue our kids too. And here's what I mean by the phrase rescuing our kids, children too. We are, through the multiple food distributions in the county, rescuing our children to connection, that sense of belonging and meaning and purpose that only comes through living with others in shared community. However, all of us, and I mean all of us, were not designed to live in isolation, people wither and die when disconnected from others. We flourish and thrive when we are connected to others in that shared community. Our next generation thrives in connected environments. Children discover and fulfill their God-given potential in connection to family and school and community. It's just the way that we are designed. And this next generation is watching us. They are watching the leaders and influences of their communities and learning from us just what true connection, true community should look like. And here's an example of what I mean. I believe kids are seeing and learning, learning from during this season of isolation. In my interactions and connections with school principals and counselors and teachers and school social workers, I have learned of the link between food insecurity and academic success. In short, when kids are hungry or not sure where their next meal is coming from, they can not learn. They stop flourishing. Their road to academic success is roadblocked. Their potential is not being fulfilled. Food insecurity disconnects them from their school community. School leaders deal with this reality every day. That's why the daily meals that kids receive at the schools when they are in session are so vital to their development. And yet, during this season of isolation, there are three separate ongoing food distribution initiatives that I have been connected with in my neighborhoods. These initiatives are in addition to the food and meal distributions paid for through the school district. It has been so inspiring to see our local school principals and counselors and teachers leading and working in these initiatives. Some working every day to make sure their young students have what they need to continue learning. And what is breathtaking for me is to see the passion and intensity they invest as they serve the children they lead and teach. They greet each family with a smile and treat each customer with dignity and respect. Why? Very simply because they know their students need the meals to continue learning and growing. The schools and their leaders are showing their students what connection looks like during this time of disconnection or isolation. Now, some may ask, aren't we just creating a generational cycle of dependency by providing free meals? I understand that question. But since we know the impact of childhood hunger on lifelong student learning and success, it is better to ask, by providing free meals, aren't we actually breaking the generational cycle of dependency? If we take a long-term approach to our decision-making, we have to answer yes to that better question. Are these food initiatives a rescue mission of sorts? Yes. Do they rescue children from hunger? Yes. But more importantly, they rescue our next generation to connection. Connection to the power of shared community, to individual academic success, connection to the fulfillment of all our kids' school potentials. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Roger Vest?
Yes, thank you first of all for allowing me to speak. I am the pastor at First United Methodist Church in Powder Springs and also currently the chairman of the board for the Cobb Collaborative. I've been in Cobb community for seven years and have served these, the community all over Cobb, South Cobb, Powder Springs, West Cobb, East Cobb, Marietta. I've seen the people who depend on our normal efforts to simply, not only, to simply survive. And since COVID, we've seen such an incredible increase in the numbers, but also I'm seeing people I've never, we've never served before. We're seeing people coming for food who have no idea how to ask for food because they've never had to do it before. Even folks who are working, their jobs have been cut, their hours have been cut, those on unemployment are not making, even though they have unemployment benefits, they're not making what they once made. And they're going farther and farther behind on their bills. And these are proud citizens, people who have committed in their community a better place and now they are seeking help to simply survive. Like the other speakers before, I have seen, I've been just overwhelmed by the collaboration and the partnership that is going on. People are working together more now than they have ever before. And it makes me proud to be a part of Cobb County, to see how our folks are working together. I was thinking about what we're dealing with and the flood in 2009. I've done a lot of work in the Clarkdale community and there's still the memories of the flood that happened. And when that happened, everyone jumped on board to help those affected. We had individuals, we had nonprofits, we had churches, the federal government, the state government, and the county government, all responded to the emergency to care for the people who were a part of Cobb County. This is an emergency as well. It's different, but yet it's the same. People are hurting, people are suffering, and all the agencies I know are running as fast as we can, doing as much as we can, tapping every resource that we can to do what we're called to do, to care for our brothers and sisters, to care for our neighbors. We are looking for whatever resources that we can get to make sure, not just that they get through this time of need, but that they're able to thrive, they're able to add value to the community as well, once they get through this. These are our kids. These are our families. We should treat them as such, we should treat them with the dignity. And if we have concerns about folks getting the correct food, you know, let's invest in some structure, let's invest in a case manager, let's pull together some other things that we're already doing, let's invest in that and make sure. We've got a lot of collaboration already going on and some more resources will allow us to do the right thing to make sure we serve our community. It's, it is both disheartening and inspiring at the same time what's going on right now. You know, I don't, my heart breaks to think of a child going hungry. And I have committed myself to doing whatever it takes to make sure I can do all that I can to make sure that they have something to eat. And so I invite you to participate, to be a part of this, to join with all the others that are doing this, to be a county and a community that serves all of our citizens in every way that we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Vest.
Sharon Mason?
Good afternoon, I'm Sharon Mason and I am president and CEO of the Cobb Chamber of Commerce. Chairman Blue and Board of Commissioners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss this proposal for financial supporting the critical and growing need of food distribution in our community as a result of COVID-19. The Cobb Chamber of Commerce strongly supports the proposed allocation of 1 million from the federal funding the county receives to provide relief to Cobb nonprofits and faith-based organizations to aid in food distribution to those in need. As you heard from Cobb Community Foundation's Executive Director, Sharon Martin yesterday, and then other speakers today, this is a significant need in our community and it will just continue to grow. So for example, because many businesses and families have been hit so hard by COVID-19, the number of families served at nonprofit distribution sites has nearly tripled from an average of 6,400 families per month earlier this year to 16,500 just in March. Nonprofits and churches are doing everything they can, and you heard that from the previous speakers, but their resources are being depleted and they need our help. As we've seen in Article 70J, Georgia's unemployment claims have skyrocketed as COVID-19 job losses have mounted, the Department of Labor is receiving record number of claims being filed. Job loss and flows are putting a major strain on their families and will continue to, even long after COVID-19 is under control, Cobb's most vulnerable populations will continue to be hit hard. So this 1 million in distribution allocation will make a major difference to help our citizens in need. This will complement the heroic efforts of many, including our nonprofits, our school systems, our churches, all who are playing a very critical role to help. And I thank you for your consideration of this very important request. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Kathy Slo?
Hi, this is Kathy Slo. I live in Marietta, Georgia. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And I am proud and honored to live in Cobb County, Marietta, Georgia. I've lived here since the late 80s. And I just want to publicly thank our Board of Commissioners and all Cobb County employees and their respective cities they're in, Marietta, Smyrna, Austell. And I just want to publicly thank you and thank our healthcare and all essential workers and our first responders, police, fire, EMTs, teachers, jitters, garbage, grocery people. I would not live anywhere else. Cobb County is not perfect, but I've gotten to know my neighbors and was able to participate in a abandoned dog rescue last week. And there's a lot of negative in the world, but I'm seeing a lot of people such as the prior speakers before me and you guys, meaning men and women, all of us stepping up to the plague. And I just wanted to do my part and say that publicly and be a responsible giving citizen and pay it forward. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for that wonderful message. That's really hardwearing and let me know what that thing that's not perfect about Cobb and we'll fix that for you, okay?
Thank you.
Chairman Blue, I think there's going to be an attempt for one other person by telephone. That person hasn't called in yet. We have two that are here to speak. Dr. Ike Reichert, please.
Well, first of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to stand up and speak. All of those wonderful calls that you just heard, most of them are friends of mine, with the exception of the last lady, and I want to get to know her. Anybody that starts out that positive is wonderful. So Mus Ministries has been in the county, it'll be 50 years this next year, and we've been able to do primarily for things at Mus. We call them wraparound services. We feed people, we shelter people, we clothe people, and we help people to be able to get jobs. But on around March the 15th, we realized we were going to have to dive deep into only two areas. And those two areas were going to be food and housing because we knew the issue that we were up against was something that was going to be unprecedented for us. And so on March the 17th, we started what we call the Mus Food Rapid Response and we shifted our model all the way around. For those of you who do not know, we have 35 pantries that are in Cobb County and City of Marietta schools. So we're actually embedded there and the school social workers are the ones that choose those families to be able to benefit. And on a normal basis, we would serve over 400 families a month out of those particular pantries that are the Mus Neighborhood Pantries. We also are helping at the same time to be able to take care of three low-income senior housing facilities. And then we have our standalone pantries, three of those, one in Cherokee County, two here in Cobb County, one off of South Cobb Drive at Pat Mel, the other one off of North Cobb Parkway. And to give you an idea of how much things have changed, normally 400 families would be taken care of inside the school pantries, another 1,100 families would be taken care of through our standalone pantries. But in fact, here in Cobb County, we took care of 10,408 people through our three client pantries in the past six weeks. To give you an idea on a yearly basis, that's 90% of the people that we fed last year. So that's how much of an increase we've been seeing. So the pantries have fed in the last six weeks 16,553 people. So add that to the 10,408. Last year through those pantries, the total was 3,901. So that's how rapid the growth has been of people that have needs. So in Cobb County alone, Mus is providing that food to the Cobb County Schools and the Marietta City Schools. And in addition, we've been distributing about 5,000 meals to clients living in our shelters. We also went in and partnered with Cobb County Schools. The Cobb County Schools themselves, through the USDA program, was providing the food there. Mus provided volunteers who would take the food when it was prepared and take it out and put it into cars. And their numbers that they gave to us was over 40,000 school cafeteria meals a week to students. And we've been able to partner with a lot of these great organizations that we've been talking about, whether it's Mosaic, one of our partners that helps us so much, the Center for Family Resources, and Melanie Kagan will speak to that a little bit later on, The Zone, Churches, Cobb Senior Services, the Noonday Association, church after church, Tillman House. There are so many different partners that we have and we are deeply appreciative because it's going to take all of them. When we go back now and restock our pantries, and all together we have 39 pantries, we have one at KSU and then three in Cherokee, the rest are Cobb and City of Marietta, we estimate it's going to take about $85,000 just to restructure that. And like a lot of other organizations that are 501(c)(3), you have your Spring Gala where you raise money, you have a golf tournament, we do, and a couple of other events. Those events have had to go away. And so we're looking for ways to be able to find the funds, to be able to do the things that we've done in the past. And then the last thing I'll mention to you is this is going to be the 25th summer in which we do our summer lunch feeding program. Last year, 7,000 children a day over in eight county area received meals from Mus. We know that we're going to have to go deeper in Cobb and Cherokee. Those are going to be the main two counties that we serve because we think we're going to have over 5,000 children a day. And now we've got to replace that summer lunch that people used to give to us, and that's probably going to cost us about $3.50 per sack lunch. So when you do the math to that, it's probably going to be about a $750,000 project. So when you do the math to that, it's probably going to be about a $750,000 project for us to feed the children and Cobb County Schools in City of Marietta. So that's my side. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reichardt.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Melanie Kagan.
Learning to walk in heels again is fun. I haven't worn real clothes in a month. Thank you guys for having me today. I wanted to come and just give a brief update from what we're seeing at the Center for Family Resources. As Ike mentioned, we're all sort of teaming together to really address some of the crisis and need that is occurring due to this crisis right now in our county. We do different things at CFR. We do housing rent assistance, utility assistance, and we do have a food pantry. We learned early on that we were not equipped to really do mass distribution for food. So we had about 20,000 pounds of food and we gave that away to our partners that are sitting at the back of the room there so that we can make sure that was getting out to the areas of most need. So that was our first response. Because we serve families, our need right now has really been geared towards keeping people housed. Even though there is a moratorium right now on some of the eviction hearings or things that are processed to disrupt housing for people, what we don't want is we don't want people to end up in three months or four months that much behind in their rent because there will be no program that can actually dig them out of that hole at that point. What we've seen to date so far, just in the month of April, is over 650 calls that have come to our office that are specifically for rental and housing and utility assistance. More than half of them are impacted by COVID. The other half were probably on the edge or needing assistance before that and have just fallen deeper into that need. So we've pivoted our help to really address those needs in Cobb. We have $150,000 grant from the United Way of Greater Atlanta and the Atlanta Community Foundation, along with money from the Cobb Community Foundation, Cobb EMC Foundation, and we've raised over $20,000 from generous individuals throughout the area to help with that assistance. One of the issues I know that we're seeing and Ike and his team have seen it too is just the availability of housing for some of our folks. We have utilized hotels when necessary. It's not an ideal placement for families. So to the event that we can find an actual stable placement for them, we would prefer to do that. No one wants to be the one to kick somebody out of a hotel in three to four weeks when that money runs out. But however, we know that the school system had over 200 families already living in extended stay hotels. So our rent assistance does cover those folks to stay in those areas so that they're not experiencing homelessness. We still have over 72 families that were on the list, or actually 60 families now that were on the list for coordinated entry that were awaiting housing placement. We continue to work that list. We've taken 12 referrals just in this month off of that list to get people housed. But we're not taking current walk-ins or doing coordinated entry assessments at this time. So the need for people who are actually experiencing homelessness is on pause in terms of the services that are available for them. The only thing we can do right now is emergency assistance for placement in hotels and/or if we have an apartment available or a unit available. We know that the shelter, like Livesafe Shelter, is completely full due to domestic violence cases. Ike's shelter is full and not taking new people. We're utilizing every available unit we can, but the housing need is going to be what we see at the end of this in a pretty big influx. People are using everything they have, savings, to stay where they are, and at some point that's going to run out. So while the food is an immediate need and we recognize that and we helped with that heavy lift in the beginning, we are worried that we are going to continue to see a slide for people who were either already on the edge or who were needing assistance already. And that housing need is going to increase. So to the event that we can work together to really find ways to do eviction prevention, whether it's a half and half where renters come up with half and a program comes up with half, or we work with landlords to really see what that's going to look like over the next couple of months, we would love to see that happen. So that's where our focus is going to be over the next couple of months. But we appreciate the county and everything they've done to help so far.
Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate your time today.
Chairman, if you could give me one moment to just check on another caller, please.
Sure.
Chairman, that concludes our speakers today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to the consent agenda. And for those of you that are watching from home, a couple admin notes. On Consent Agenda Item Number 33, we've revised the background information, has no impact on the recommendation. On Consent Agenda Items 47 and 48, they've been withdrawn. And on 49, Item Number 49, we've revised the attachments to reflect comments made yesterday by members of the board. I'd like to now add some of the following agenda items to the consent agenda, and these at least require a motion and a second and a vote by the board. So I make a motion to add Agenda Item Number 79 to approve a settlement of the Workers' Confrontation Claim Number SBWC 2019-128280 on behalf of Catherine Winslow.
Second.
We have discussion? Call the question. You have to raise your hand, okay? And can somebody see where Commissioner Ott is? Okay. So, unless I hear the... I see, I got you now, Commissioner. Okay, we have five deserved passes. Item Number 80, authorize a settlement of Cobb County versus Pilgrim Square and others, Civil Action File Number 14-1-04505-48. Cobb County Superior Court pursuant to the direction within the terms has discussed an executive session on April 27, 2020.
So moved.
Okay, have a second? Any discussion? Raise your hand if you agree. The motion passes 5 to 0. Item Number 80, authorized submission of a fiscal year 20 Federal Aviation Administration State Block Grant Program application to the USA Department of Transportation under the Corona's Aid and Economic Security Act for operating assistance and further authorize the Airport Division Manager to submit the required documents. I'll make that motion. Have a second?
Second.
Have a discussion? Own favor, raise your right hand. The pass is 5 to 0. Okay, I believe that takes care of the consent agenda items. So that, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as revised. Second, discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Ott.
Yes, there has been a request by some folks in the community to explain why there are certain SPOS items on the consent agenda when normally they'd be on the regular agenda. I think the county manager was going to make an explanation.
Sure. Okay, we'll bring up Dr. McMorris for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ott, Board of Commissioners, County Attorney. So those items that are SPOS items were approved by the county manager during the time that we were still in LOS and we did not have a March meeting. So based on our actions in LOS, we brought them back to ratify those items by the board to keep them from being spread out throughout this meeting's agenda. I worked with the county clerk to make sure that all of those items that were ratified would be in one place in the agenda book rather than going back and forth. But they are published, they are out there, and if anyone has any questions, you can feel free to reach out to me. But those items were approved by the county manager, ratified by this board, but just put in one place under consent.
Okay.
Going forward and during meetings like these, they would also be in the regular agenda going forward if we continue to have virtual meetings or whatever, they would be put in the regular agenda going forward.
Commissioner Ott, you got a comment?
Yes, and I think Dr. McMorris had also said that been on the regular agenda, but as she mentioned, that since they were approved and kind of processed since that regular agenda, that's why they moved to consent.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have other comments. Commissioner Gamble?
Yes. I do not support Number 45, 49 as it was written. So I'd like that reflected in the record.
Okay, so noted? I'm sorry?
49 as revised or as writ?
As revised.
Okay. We received the revised attachment, but I still, we still have the compensation in here for limited operational services.
Okay, so that's noted. Any other comments? Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, could you just have Commissioner Gamble repeat it because when folks are using the podium mic, it freezes the online, and so I didn't hear all of what she said.
Okay.
I would like it noted for the record that I'm opposed to Item Number 45 and then also Item Number 49.
All right, further discussion? Call the question. Can I see, can I... There you go. Okay, it passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Okay, on the regular. Some admin notes on the regular agenda for those at home. Item Number 57 and Item Number 67, they both have been withdrawn. So that, we'll start with DOT. And we won't start with DOT. She needs to talk. You can present it now. Okay, I'm wrong again. So I didn't get the right hand and arm signal from Millie, so now I'm really in deep trouble here.
We just worked on it.
So we're only going to withdraw Item Number 57. 67 will be presented by Ms. Parrish along with the other agenda items.
Yes, sir.
Because we need...
Some people in the public.
Oh, I see. Okay, good point. 57 was about issuing the proposal to provide funding for agencies to provide for food and security programs, in other words, roughly to nonprofits. We had a long discussion yesterday at the board meeting of the agenda preparation, and we've agreed to postpone this till we come back and have the county attorney produce a instrument that the board can vote on as to how we plan to disburse these funds if it's approved by the board. So I expect to have that product here sometime in the very near future, following up on the comments made yesterday by Ms. Martin at her presentation and by a number of the pastors this morning. So that's the only reason it's been withdrawn. It has not been, it's just simply postponed to a time when we have something we can take to the board in a format that they can vote on. Okay, with that, floor is yours, Ms. Erica.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The first item we would like to request for consideration is the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $15,211.40 for drainage system repairs on Ridgewood Creek Drive.
Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
All in favor, raise your...
Second.
Okay, we have a discussion now. Discussion, okay? Now call the question. Raise your right hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the county manager authorizing emergency repairs on Woodland Brook Drive in response to a sinkhole. Approved, approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $206,321 for said repairs.
Commissioner Ott.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Discussion? Raise your right hand if you're in favor. Passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve contract modification, change order number one, to the utility relocation agreement with Georgia Transmission Corporation in an amount not to exceed $21,848 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Cherokee Street.
Commissioner Burrow.
So moved.
Second.
Second, discussion? All in favor, raise your...
We have a discussion.
Okay, I'll call the question. Raise your right hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Accelerate Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $236,089.88 for John Ward Road Sidewalks.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
I have a discussion? Call the question. Raise your right hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the county manager authorizing emergency repairs on Woodland Brook Drive in response to a sinkhole. Approved, approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $206,321 for said repairs.
Commissioner Ott.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Discussion? Raise your right hand if you're in favor. Passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve contract modification, change order number one, to the utility relocation agreement with Georgia Transmission Corporation in an amount not to exceed $21,848 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Cherokee Street.
Commissioner Burrow.
So moved.
Second.
Second, discussion? All in favor, raise your...
We did receive clarification. This is a joint SPOS project with Kennesaw and it's a 50/50 split.
Right.
Thank you, Erica.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll call the question. Raise your right hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Accelerate Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $236,089.88 for John Ward Road Sidewalks.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
I have a discussion? Call the question. Raise your right hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve resurfacing contract 2020-3 Local Roads North with Barto Paving Company in an amount not to exceed $5,767,237.68 for resurfacing of county maintained streets.
Commissioner Ott.
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the question. Raise your right hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve resurfacing contract 2020-3 Local Roads North with Barto Paving Company in an amount not to exceed $5,767,237.68 for resurfacing of county maintained streets.
Commissioner Ott.
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the question. Raise your right hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ask Erica to hold the mic closer to her mouth. If she's garbled, then it's breaking up.
Yes, sir. Okay, our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Marietta for improvements on Bells Ferry Road at the intersection of Turner Road and Dixon Road.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the question. Raise your right hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ask Erica to hold the mic closer to her mouth. If she's garbled, then it's breaking up.
Yes, sir. Okay, our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Marietta for improvements on Bells Ferry Road at the intersection of Turner Road and Dixon Road.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the question. Raise your right hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA 32-3-4. Authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on two parcels on Bells Ferry Road at the intersection of Turner Road and Dixon Road. Project Number D6040, Phase B, adopt the resolutions and orders in form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the county attorney's office and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? Call the question. Raise your right hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA 32-3-4. Authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on five parcels on Mac Dobbs Road. Project Number X2606, adopt the resolutions and orders in form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the county attorney's office and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Discussion? Call the question. Raise your right hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with Accelerate Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $29,740.34 for Gordon Combs Road Sidewalk and also approve change order number one to the contract in an amount not to exceed $38,429.74 for said project. Approve a contract time extension through September 30 of 2020 and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the question. Raise your left hand. Passes 5 to 0.
Simon says. Thank you.
I saw Commissioner Cupid bubble voting over here.
Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to the contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $15,706.67 for roadway improvements on Sandy Plains Road.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve. [inaudible 0:29:31]. Thank you.
I saw Commissioner Cupid bubble voting over here.
Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number to the contract in an amount not to exceed $38,429.74 for said project, approve a contract time extension through September 30th of 2020, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the question, raise your left hand. Passes five to zero.
Simon says.
Thank you.
I saw Commissioner Cupid bubble voting over here.
Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to the contract with C W Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $15,706.67 for roadway improvements on Sandy Plains Road.
Commissioner Burl?
Motion to approve with pleasure.
Second with pleasure. Any discussion? Call the question, raise your right hand. Where's Commissioner Ott? Lost Commissioner Ott, where is he? I can only-
I hear, yes.
Okay, I hear his voice, he votes yes, so it passes five to zero, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our last item for consideration is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a term sheet with the U.S. Department of Transportation and the Georgia Department of Transportation for Acres Mill Road Managed Lanes, Phase Two, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott?
So moved.
Discussion? Sure, go ahead, Commissioner Cupid.
I saw in the email, question about why this was contemplated in the 2016 SPOLOX, and my presumption is that this is coming out of that bucket for federal match funding.
Yes, ma'am, it was, it was a named project in the federal, state, local match bucket. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Call the question. Commissioner Ott, you voting yes?
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay, passes five to zero, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Erica. Okay, Parks, Mr. Geese.
Good afternoon. Our first item this afternoon is for the board to approve a contract with Garland Design Build Solutions Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $304,945 to replace the roof system at the Art Place Mountain View under the 2016 program. We ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the contract, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Call the question. Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Okay, passes five to zero, thank you.
Our final item is for the board to approve change order number one final to the contract with Complete Demolition Services LLC for asbestos removal and demolition of the structures on the Felton property. This item results in a $24,950 credit to the project from the 2011 Park SPOLOX program. We ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the document, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott?
So moved.
Call the question, and since Commissioner Ott moved it, I'm assuming it's a yes. Passes five to zero, thank you. Support Services.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Our first agenda item this morning is a joint request with DOT and Public Safety to authorize the transfer of a small portion of Cobb County property located in Land Lot 1081, Land District 19, Section 2, Cobb County, identified as Track A in the attached exhibits, to the Georgia Department of Transportation for our current road project, PI 0013229, and further to convey another small portion of Cobb property, of county property, as required right of way from a previous project, PI 750731, identified as existing ROW in Track B on the exhibits, to Georgia Department of Transportation, and further authorize the chairman to execute the quitclaim deed and any other necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any discussion? I'll call the question. Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Okay, passes five to zero, thank you. I saw it.
Our second, our second item on the agenda this afternoon is a joint item with the Community Development Agency. On April 10th, 2018, the Board of Commissioners authorized issuance of a request for proposal for acquisition of a new business license and occupation tax system to upgrade and replace our aging existing legacy system. A public hearing was held on May 8th, 2018, and RFP number 18-6380 was advertised at the Marietta Daily Journal on July 13th, July 20th, July 27th, and August 3rd of 2018. Seven firms responded to the RFP. The proposals were reviewed by an evaluation committee, and Tyler Technologies, Inc. was selected. This is an approved project under the 2016 SPOLOX Support Services Technology Improvements Work Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Tyler Technologies, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $1,279,909 to plan, design, and develop and implement a new business license and occupation tax system, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid? Call the question. Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Okay, passes five to zero, thank you.
Our third item this afternoon is a request for the board to authorize the purchase of computer equipment under provisions of the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance Contract 1-97 with Process Information Systems, Inc. This is a joint 2016 SPOLOX project for the Facilities Improvement Program X 0920 and Transportation Improvements Program X 2531. The uninterrupted power supply, or UPS, at the Cobb DOT Traffic Management Center is 15 years old and near the end of its useful life. This UPS also supports part of our disaster recovery infrastructure. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to purchase a UPS for the TMC in an amount not to exceed $60,482 under provisions of the NCPA Contract 1-97 with Process Information Systems, Inc., and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
So moved. Discussion? Call the question. Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Okay, passes five to zero, thank you.
Our final item this afternoon is a request for the board to authorize the purchase of computer equipment greater than $100,000 under provisions of the Georgia Department of Administrative Services Contract 99999-001 SPD 0000139-005. The 2016 SPOLOX Support Services Technology Improvements Program included funding for technology improvements and modernization, a data center build, and creation of a disaster recovery capability. Additional storage capacity is required for the Storage Area Network Device, or the SAN. The SAN device will be moved to the new data center when it becomes operational. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to make purchases of computer equipment in an amount not to exceed $102,718.44 under provisions of a Georgia Department of Administrative Services Contract with Process Information Systems, Inc., and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Ott?
So moved.
We have a second from Commissioner Cupid, any discussion? Call the question. Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Okay, passes five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of appointments today. First of all, I want to thank Monica Delancy, a well-known community leader in the county. She's resigned from the Keep Cobb Beautiful Board, and I want to thank her for her services. And I'm really pleased to announce the appointment of Fernando Farr to replace her. Officer Farr is a retired first sergeant from the United States Army, and also one of Cobb's finest, wearing the uniform of the police department. So I'm pleased to make that announcement today. And Commissioner Gamble, you have an announcement, an appointment?
Yes, I'd like to announce the reappointment of Tom Reedy to the Plumbing Advisory Board.
Thank you. So I'll start with Commissioner Burl for-
Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes.
We have actually two additional speakers that are in the room-
Okay.
-that wanted to speak.
All right.
One of them was actually one signed up and on the phone, but actually appeared.
Okay.
Mr. Todd Lalas.
Thank you for just the opportunity to share a little bit about what's going on in North Cobb County. I'm with, I'm the operations pastor at Freedom Church, right there on Cobb Parkway, and we've been blessed to have the opportunity to be able to care for some families during this crisis, and, you know, I heard someone say one time, and my pastor actually said this to me yesterday and reminded me of it, but crisis, I really do believe that crisis reveals our character. And so on March the 15th, when we closed our doors that first Sunday, we had a decision to make, and we made the decision that we wanted to go all in and do everything we could to care for our community. And so at that point, we didn't, we weren't involved in food distribution of any sort, and we decided, made the decision to partner with the YMCA there in town and have been able to care for a lot of families in our community. We're distributing food and collecting food to distribute for around 300 families every week. Those families can stop by our location and pick up bags of food. But also on the weekends, we're taking around 200 bags of food, which is about 10 meals in those bags, to, to 200 families that are staying in extended stay hotels or in locations where they may not have transportation or have food resources. And so we've been blessed to be able to do that, and also just have the opportunity to be in contact with the principals in our community and to see, as someone else said earlier, how much they do care for the kids in their community. And so we've been able to have people pick up and drop off food at people's doors when they don't have transportation. And so it's been a blessing to be able to work with the YMCA on that initiative. And I just wanted to report just a little bit of what I'm seeing as we're seven or so weeks into this situation now. We are seeing an increase in people who are requesting food, but a decrease in the number, in the amount of resources that are available. And we've relied heavily on our church to provide those resources to this point, and then also there have been some resources coming in through the YMCA. And as time has gone on, obviously, you know, the same people trying to provide those resources every week, when the unemployment rate is going up and some of those people are losing their jobs, has been challenging. And so, you know, and one of the things I think is a concern for me, as we, as we go longer into this situation and we get into summer, you know, the YMCA and Mus, they, they have summer lunch programs, well, those resources have already been tapped into to be able to just take care of families in this, in this interim time before the kids even get out of school. So there's going to be a, a need for, for months and months to come. And so we're happy to be a part of helping to meet those needs, and we're going to do everything we can in our power to do that. And I've been so proud to see our community come together and do everything they can to, to meet the needs of those families. And, but, you know, today, I just want to say this, I think we're just really scratching the surface of what, what the need is. And even the food that we're putting in the hands of the people, you know, they can't live off of that long-term. There's a few meals in there to get them through the week, but there's not, there's not, you know, nobody, nobody's stocking up their pantry on what we're giving them. And so, you know, I just wanted to share a little bit about what we're seeing in the north part of the county, you know, because there is a great need there. I could put you in my car and take you five minutes down the road and show you some of those locations, and so, show you some of the need that, that we see on a daily basis. And also even an increase in people that are calling just for assistance of other sorts, whether it's housing, utilities, you know, all, all kinds of other things. So I appreciate the opportunity just to be able to share some of those things with you today and to share what our experience has been, and encourage you to, to do everything you can to help us to be able to take care of these families long-term.
Thank you for coming today, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Howard Koepka?
My name is Howard Koepka, I work with Moonday Association of Churches, also working with Sherry Martin and the Cobb Foundation and multiple other nonprofits on a Cobb Crisis Response Team. And my role has been helping just oversee and facilitate a lot of the food distribution efforts that are happening all across the county. And I just want to, first of all, thank Commissioner, Chairman Boyce and Michael Murphy, who was here a minute ago, for coming out and serving alongside of us all day Saturday out at Reflections of Trinity in Powder Springs. As you've heard from Ike and others, the, the lift of the nonprofit world right now is three to four times what it was pre-crisis. And we are just being inundated with needs. We're using the Cobb Community Connection website to help identify where we have food distributions, where we have other services being offered, as well as where we are seeing gaps in coverage around the county. And particularly in the South Cobb area, we've been able to do mobile distributions in different, mobile home parks and apartment complexes and things. And the nonprofit world, it's just amazing to see them all working together so seamlessly and helping each other and filling gaps and all of this. But the main thing I just want to convey to you today is the nonprofit world is trying their best to raise the funds to support all these efforts. But what they have historically relied on in terms of grocers giving excess is no longer there. Grocers between disruptions in supply chains, as well as just keeping up with the demand in their stores, that excess is not there. In addition to companies and individuals donating to these nonprofit efforts, because of all the economic uncertainty that we are seeing because of this crisis, a lot of those donations are there. I don't, with about 40 different nonprofits every day, and they are all running low on food, they're all scrouching for money, and I just want to encourage the commission to do everything you can to help support these efforts. As you've already heard today, the lift right now is huge, but it's only going to grow as the economic fallout from this crisis continues. So I just want to thank you for your time and just encourage you to do whatever you can to support these efforts.
Thank you very much.
And you were on Fox 5 last night.
Yes, ma'am.
Sherry, you and Sherry.
And I'll stay with you, Commissioner Burl, for Commissioner comments.
Well, I want you all to know that through this crisis, there is some good that comes out of this. And with people being at home and sheltering in place, we have had a record number of five adoptions at our Cobb County, County Animal Shelter for veterans this past week. So the first one is Ms. Sand Booth, a 31-year veteran of the Air Force, adopted this beautiful German Shepherd. The next one is Mr. Caples, a 41-year veteran of the Army, adopted a cute little kitty. It's camera shy. The next one is Mr. Lewis, a veteran of the Navy, adopted a handsome husky. And Mr. Ellis, a 21-year veteran of the Army, adopted a sweet lab mix. And Mr. Shaw, a four-year veteran of the Navy, adopted a cute little pit bull. So thank you to Superior Plumbing for your generous donations that make this possible, and to the Cobb County Animal Shelter and staff for your timeless efforts on behalf of the veterans that serve. So thank you all, and this brings our total, Mr. Chairman, up to 141. So we have about 39 more to go before we run out of funds. So when you're ready to get a new one, you're a veteran, go to the Cobb County Animal Shelter. And then that's it for the veterans. And as you know, when we started through this process of battling COVID-19, we formed a community task force, and it's made up of great citizens and leaders in our county that have done an excellent job in being our eyes and ears out there for the needs of folks in citizens and business communities, faith-based, or faith-based organizations, our Cobb County and Marietta City Schools. And they have really done a great job in working with us and getting our messages out. Also, public health has been instrumental in this. And I'd just like to say thank you to all the members of the task force. And you can go to cobbcounty.org and see the resource guide that has been put out. It's got a lot of information of where to go for different categories, and I just want to say thank you to the task force. They've done a great job, and we appreciate all they're doing. So each week, we all put out a newsletter, and to stay up to date on things going on in the community and testing and everything regarding COVID-19, please visit our websites, and you can sign up to get all of our newsletters. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Burl. Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. A big thank you to everyone who has been helping, serving our community, everyone who's been working with the county, who sacrificed their time to be here today so that we could be up here today doing what we do and serving our constituents. Thank you to the many employees who've been here working, while some of us have not been here because of the title of your roles. Thank you for all the employees who've been helping to move business along and our projects along in our districts. It's been very satisfying to see some things that have still been continuing to move forward because of your initiatives. So thank you for that. Thank you for those who've been reaching out to us. And- Thank you for those who've been reaching out to us and just for all of your well wishes. And I look forward to us returning that thanks to you and how we serve and protect you during this time and also get Cobb County back and running. I do have a couple of flyers I'd like to share of things that are going on. The first one is with respect to small business development. We have an ongoing resource at Kennesaw State to help people with small businesses that you can tap into now and that can assist with fielding any questions or people even thinking about starting businesses at this time. And that information is on the screen. Next slide. Also, I know we've all been concerned about COVID and a lot of issues, but we've had a lot of conversation today about being able to help those who are most vulnerable. Our census helps us be able to identify our population numbers so that we can get resources to help those who are most vulnerable, but to help everyone in our community. This funding goes towards helping to determine who's going to be carved in different elected seeds. Money helps to determine funding that we're going to get for roads. And it helps with the number of resources that we have in just operating business as a county. And with the self-response rate so far, we've had a bit over 50% respond. And some areas of the county, particularly in District Four and some in District Two, have been lower. And we really need for you guys to help us get our numbers more true to our accurate population so we have the resources to serve you. So encourage you, if you haven't self-reported, to please do. And for those who've been serving in nonprofits and in our census team, just thank you for getting the word out and continuing to remind people to participate in the census. Finally, a thank you to our board. Thank you just for your engagement during this time. And in particular, thanks to the chairman. I know he's been balancing a lot of issues, but one thing that we've received a lot of correspondence on was the opening of our Silver Comet Trail. And I've been amazed at how many people have been relieved by it being open. I know some of us utilize our parks, but I was in a small group meeting at church and even someone mentioned Silver Comet Trail. And it just made me realize how much our assets impact people's well-being every day. So thank you in balancing the concerns of the community and opening up our trails and passive parks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gambrell.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, thank you to all of our public safety, healthcare workers and our staff here at Cobb County that have helped us these last months almost seamlessly. I appreciate all you do. I know a big shout out to Parks Department. They've been going through quite a transition with getting our parks back open and getting some items repaired from storm damage. So if you see storm damage or anything that needs attention in our parks, just email us and let us know and we will get on it as soon as we can. Also, I'd like to thank the Cobb Chamber and John Loud. Over the past month, the Chamber hosted several online forums to help small businesses with funding. And if anyone did not have an opportunity to see those, they are still online there and just know that our Chamber is here to help our businesses. And I would just like to thank everyone who has volunteered and contributed food, donated masks and kept our community humming. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think anybody, I don't think you have my picture anymore. So I sent a picture to Sharon. I don't know if whoever's going to be able to get it up on the screen. But I just want to thank the IT and staff and all the staff in general for all the work they've done to try to help keep the county running. Without all their hard work, it wouldn't have happened. The picture I sent, I don't know if you can see it, but basically it's a picture of a box. I mean, just today, Kim and I received 40 N95 masks for public safety from a group of Chinese Americans that are residents of the county. In addition, I want to thank Mary Ann Snyder, who has been donating masks throughout East Cobb and to the police and the fire. And she actually started a collection for the elections office. And when we talk about the elections, I want to remind everybody to check the newsletters in the county webpage for the drop-off procedures. There's a drop-off box put outside elections once or twice a week to allow folks to drop off masks that they've made. And then I want to thank my assistant, Kim. She's worked really hard every week to make a newsletter that's positive. We've gotten a lot of really good submissions from folks to kind of just keep people a little bit uplifted and give them some ideas on what to do with their families while they're in quarantine or shelter in place.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ott. And I'll just close with a couple of comments. First of all, I want to echo the words of all the board members here thanking the staff, the community leaders, there's so many of them. We are so blessed in this county to have so many great people at so many different levels doing so many wonderful things. I really appreciate more than ever the board working with me over this last six weeks. It's just hard for me to imagine that the first inkling of this coming wave was the arrival of the passenger ship, cruise passenger ships in early March. That seemed so long ago. That seemed like the big deal. And now it's every day, it brings something new and interesting. But the board has been remarkable, working together, coming together, trying to find ways that we still have an open and transparent government, also stay in communication with people to address their needs. So this is a real pleasure working with the board here over the last six weeks. And so I want you to know that this board truly cares about what's going on out there. We balance the needs. It's been interesting about the Silver Comet Trail. I just want to say one thing is that when we first started doing the measurements for the expansion of the virus, the virus was doubling every three days when we first started taking numbers. Because of the measures that the board adopted a month ago, we have reduced that to once every 14 days. So the board has really stepped up to the plate here and done some really courageous things here, tough decisions. Yes, some of them are unpopular, but I hope that everyone understands that it's in the best interest of you, the people, that we took these measures. And now because you have been working with the board and complying with so many of our requests, we're able to slowly reopen the county. So it won't just be the businesses that we've seen here, but it'll also be, you know, parks in those popular areas. But we have to remember, let's not get complacent. The virus is still out there. It's still very dangerous. But if you continue to take all the precautions that have been urged by everyone from the president on down to the governor, through our truly remarkable Director of Public Health here, Dr. Memark, wash your hands, practice social distancing. If you feel ill, stay home. You all know what the rules are. If you do those, then we can reduce the spread of the virus even more and open up more things. So again, it's a reflection of the people we have here in Cobb County. You're the true heroes here because you've taken the hard steps and you've made the sacrifices in order for us to resume some degree of the new norm, whatever that's going to be here. So with that, we're going to be going, we're going to be having meetings twice a month again, all right? We think we have a good process here. We're still working on some of the technology. But it is amazing what we can do today with the technology, and even somebody as old as me has been able to do this. But whoever blanked out Commissioner Ott's picture, I appreciate that, and we'll be working on that for the next meeting. So with that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Sharon Stanley and I have been talking about it or going along. Some of it, I think the issues are the mic, but at the podium, it's causing stuff to cut in and out.
Okay. Well, bring those up. No detail is too small. And we're going to redo this more and more. Would this become the new way of doing business? But clearly being able to have the people call in here, emails, texting, it's all working. So let's adjust to the new reality here, to whatever it is for how long it is. But I know in the last six months, both what I've seen here in the board and the community, we're going to get through this together, which is what makes America great. So with that, we're adjourned. So with that, we're adjourned.